Mr. Conover. Mr. Leggett.
Here.
Mr. Diamond.
Here.
Mr. McDevitt.
Here.
Ms. Bramer.
Here.
Mr. Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Driscoll.
Here.
Mrs. Frazier. Mr. Drossi.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Dickinson. Mr. Marlino.
Here.
Mr. Straub.
Here.
Mr. Wild. Mr. McGowan.
Of course.
Mr. Beatty. Mr. Eto'o.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Runyon.
Here.
Chairman Garrity.
Here.
Form is established.
We have. We'll open up the floor to any public comment, anybody who wish to address the board this morning. Any item. Ding. Ever you made it.
Thank you.
First time of business, a motion to approve the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Minutes being subject correction. To motion by Supervisor Bruno, second by Supervisor Drossing, discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Here. Okay, next we have the presentation of employee of the month. And this this month, it's a building and ground employee, Justin Gordon, and I'll ask Rogers if he would say a few words.
Thank you Chair Ferguson, Garrity and Board. I wanted to say a few things about Justin. We nominated him from our team. As he started here in July of twenty-one, and what he does basically is every day he steps over and above and does anything that's asked of him. Wants to learn everything, wants to move on, wants to take any challenge, accepts them, and then goes out and makes them successful. His team, as you can see, a bunch of them kind of joined him here because we are a team over there and he is a main integral part of that team. Uh, Justin, the main reason we nominated him was about three months ago, four months ago, we had an incident where one of our systems went down and we had to have a person step up and stay overnight to do a fire watch. He adjusted his home life, all of his externals and everything, and he remained here for two weeks and stayed overnight to watch the building to make sure nothing happened. Without any questions asked, without any hiccups, he just did it. And that's why we felt that he was a good nominee and a recipient for employee of the month. So, thank you.
I've been here two years and I love my job still.
You love the wilderness.
Board of the chair.
The wild me.
My report pretty much this month. Then at all the committee meetings, and then spent most of our time moving over the budget review sessions with with the budget team and we do have our challenges going forward. I'll leave it to Budget Officer Thomas to give you all the good news. And I also attended the APA Local Government Meeting up in Long Lake. As you knew during the one storm, Long Lake was pretty decimated with a lot of flood damage and they're still just recovering up there. Other than that, and then I went to the joint capital meeting and SUNY Adirondack last week, we heard about the capital crisis. And that's my report, so. Supervisor McGowan, a report.
Oh, yes, I have to say, I was finally invited to the balloon festival. One of the coordinations, the last coordination meeting, and I have to say, I missed quite a bit not being invited before, and I have to say, the the committee has really put together a really great program for the fiftieth balloon festival weekend coming up when it added an event. And we have stuff going all over from Crandall Park to Glens Falls to Highland and Queensberry, and then, of course, to the airport, so. Um, it's coming up soon, so I hope that we can get some of the supervisors out there to dismingle and come out. I guess this year we will not be taking donations at the at the gate, so this is something new. It's going to be a good flow of traffic. So nobody can blame you for the traffic backing up on the road, but we're looking forward to a great time, so I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Supervisor Beatty.
Uh, no report.
Supervisor Eto'o.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Right on, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'm filling in for Supervisor Wild. Uh, he couldn't be here today, so I was also also chaired the Personnel Committee meeting, so I'm filling in. It's in your packet is resolutions four twenty-nine through four thirty-four and also four forty-three. Uh, the first one, four twenty-nine is creating some opposition in the Public Defender's Office and also deleting a position, a position uh, in the Sheriff's Office, creating a patrol officer for the Warrensburg School. Uh, real property taxes, creating a tax map tech and deleting a senior tax tax map map tech at retirement. Uh, four thirty is extending the termination date with the agreement with the Bon Council Fitzgerald Morris Earth. Confirmed. Four thirty-one is amending the standing rules of the board uh, to add section eight to section E at to add a number eight to section E concerning out-of-unit employee salary increases and to make it only at budget time. Uh, four thirty-two is an upgrade for the County Attorney's Office for the Lexus Nexus subscription uh, for the library research system. Uh, four thirty-three is a renewal of the county's health and dental plan uh, at a two point nine percent increase to the premiums. And four thirty-four is a renewal of the Medicare Advantage Insurance Plan with Humana for county retirees, and it's an eight percent decrease to the premium. And lastly is four forty-three, and that's from SUNY Adirondack. And it's a resolution supporting the capital improvement plan for twenty-four and twenty-five at uh, for campus security in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, half of it's paid by New York State and the other half is paid by chargebacks from that the college received. And that concludes Personnel Budget. Uh, we have completed the meetings with all the all the department heads. Uh, September eighth, uh, the departments had to have their budgets submitted to the with the clerk. Uh, currently we're seven million dollars above the tax gap. The tax gap's one point two million, so currently we're up eight point two million with requests and needs for departments, so. Uh, when I get my head wrapped around that a little bit better and where we're going to go, we'll have some budget meetings and decide what we're going to do. That's it.
Supervisor Wright.
No report.
Supervisor Conover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of works met on the twenty-fourth of August, represented in your packet by resolutions four twenty-five, four twenty-six, four twenty-seven and four twenty-eight. They're all very straightforward. Uh, project resolutions. Uh, Mr. Hedges, if you have any specific questions on these projects. And we also have four twenty-eight, which we do annually, which is in agreement with the Therman Snowville Club. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Supervisor Leggett.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance met on August thirty-first. Thank you Supervisor Thomas for putting on and on the map. And we also met on September eighth in joint meeting with Personnel and Washington County at SUNY Adirondack. There are eleven resolutions from Finance in front of you, four oh nine, four oh ten, as per usual, plus the four thirty-five through four forty-three. Seven are roll calls. Uh, first one here, four thirty-five is is revision of our credit card policy. The second one, four thirty-six is establishing the Capital Reserve Fund for seventeen thousand four hundred fourteen dollars. This has to do with a PCB settlement, and I, once again, that's a reserve fund for when needed. Four thirty-seven is you know, giving a letter, getting a letter that we're good for the money for Highmark Blue Shield of Northeastern New York. The amount of uh, two hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Three oh four thirty-eight, we're getting some big capital projects here, Williams Unstrive Road. I'm glad to see that DPW has been able to get and secure grant funding for now these bridge projects, one million five hundred thousand dollars. For that one, another one million five hundred thousand and resolution four thirty-nine for a Bay Road. Bridge. Four forty is increasing capital project to the total of four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, the local share of that for the county is one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars, but we need to transfer some money. So we approve that for thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that's for the Adirondack Bridge and Beaver Pond Bridge replacement. Therefore, Warren is authorizing agreement with SBCA of Upstate New York for dog seizure control and dog shelter and animal cruelty prevention. Response and support throughout Warren County at eight thousand dollars a month, also following that on four forty-two is the appropriations for that of for being four months of this year, equalling thirty-six thousand dollars. And then, as mentioned, Resolution four forty-three that came out of our joint meeting with SUNY Adirondack and of approving a five hundred thousand dollar campus safety and security upgrades. Now, costs that are are covered by their fifty percent funded by New York State, the other fifty percent is from chargebacks. That is my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Nick.
No reports.
Supervisor McDevitt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had asked by a constituent, uh, or over the years I've been asked by constituents, so what does what does Warren County actually do for the city of Glens Falls and John has been good enough to compile a report with myself and uh, let me just briefly list some of the issues as they relate to what the county provides the city of Glens Falls. Uh, our Sheriff's Department, there were ten thousand one hundred and eighty-six calls for service dispatched year to date, and approximately approximately twenty-five percent of those were headed Glens Falls Nexus. A hundred and thirty-two evictions year to date, a hundred and eleven orders of protection coming from family court. Approximately fifty percent of the cases in terms of narcotics enforcement have a Glens Falls Nexus. Our Civic Center, the the county has consistently supported our Civic Center to the tune of in many years, a quarter of a million dollars a year, a hundred thousand dollars a year for for capital cost and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA for lost revenues. I know Claudia Bramer and myself were involved with our former Fire Department Chief, Chief Schrammel, and I know there were some ARPA funds provided to the city when where they had then had the ability to go out and purchase an emergency vehicle. Uh, twenty-two percent of home care, home care services were provided to the residents of Glens Falls. Thirty-two percent of social services were provided to Glens Falls residents. Our workforce development program, the county pays our summer, our summer youth employees. We're sponsoring DPW workers for getting their updated CDL licenses. We help in the effort in terms of trying to help Glens Falls students who have dropped out of of school. Uh, probably the the most obvious recently is the one point five million dollars a year given to the in conjunction, working to help the Greater Glens Falls Transit Authority with the CDT A in terms of the modernization and the long-term fiscal reliability in in terms of providing dollars and cents for county transportation. In terms of some of some of the issues that are more direct and more specific to the to the city. The the county has provided a full inventory of all sidewalks and ramps within the city to help with their planning. Working very closely with our sewer and water staff to obtain and review basic water, water and sewer data. Created online apps for the city by use for the water and sewer staff. Assisted the staff of the Mayor's Office with mapping, updated the parking map for the city, tactical support for the city's redistricting committee to address federally mandated elections. Provided an online inventory of vacant parcels in the city, created and analyzing impacts of current downtime zoning, analyzing impacts of current. Uh, again, downtown zoning, created a dashboard of properties owned by the city. Created a dashboard of tax-exempt properties and and data and technical assistance to the city staff in creating an inventory of foreclosed and dilapidating housing. So, Mr. Chairman, I I I just John was good enough to help compile this information, and I thank him for that, but I think I at least can more intelligently answer a constituent now, a constituent now, and then basically say honestly that that the the county of Orin does provide some significant services and important services to help in the quality of life and and just making Glens Falls a better place to to live and reside. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chipperson. I'll start with the ARPA Committee. Su- that Supervisor Dickinson and I chair, co-chair. We had passed a resolution in twenty twenty-two authorizing funding for the Southern Adirondack Childcare Network. So we have a new resolution that allows them to expand the scope of the services that they can provide with the existing funding. It's not any further funding, but we felt that we needed to have a new resolution to authorize um, new contract language that'll go through the County Attorney's Office. So this is going to allow them to do a shared service alliance to support child cares throughout Warren County, and it's both for in-home family-based childcare and for center-based child cares. So I would ask for your support on that. I think it's really important that we continue that great work of the ARPA Committee. And under environmental concerns and real property, we have two things in front of you today. One is Resolution four twenty-four, which is the real property tax exemption for the volunteer firefighters and EMS volunteers. So that's going to provide them the authority to have a real property exemption for their home, the property that they own in the municipality where they're volunteering as a firefighter or an EMS worker, I'm sorry, ambulance worker. And I just want to note that this is an option that they can take with respect to their income tax exemption. They can't take both, so they can either opt for an income tax or or the real property tax. But in any case, I that did go through committee. There was a lot of discussion. The county attorney gave us a really thorough presentation. Um, so we had a lot of debate on that, and I would ask your support on that one as well. And then, within Resolution four twenty-nine, there is a request to create a new position in the Real Property Office, and you'll see that that does not actually start until January second, twenty twenty-four. So our director has requested this in her budget for next year, but would like to create the position now so that she can post it and start advertising for it now and get that person on board starting in January. And then our current senior tax map technician is going to retire, so that position then will be deleted. So we do ask for your support within Resolution four twenty-nine. That's from my report. Thank you.
Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County facilities met on August twenty-fourth. Uh, we have two resolutions in front of you. Four twelve and four thirteen, they're pretty straightforward. Four twelve is basically just somewhat of a name change. Nexant Solar is assigning they have land lease. They're signing the lease to Northern Gateway Renewables and Southern Gateway Renewable, which actually is under Nexant. They manage that. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Four thirteen is awarding bid and authorizing agreements with several contractors for the completion of Phase Four renovations. The Warren County Courts, this is the final phase of that. And it's not that big you have that in your and I hope you would support those two. And additionally, we discussed the design updates for the front entrance. The building goes continue to be developed. And additionally, the magnetometer, the DMV entrance, that will be installed when that becomes available. So that's my report. Thank you. Thanks.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Services Committee did not meet this past month, but will this month, scheduled for Wednesday, September twentieth on our about twelve ten P M. Cornell Cooperative Extension Board Meeting will be held this coming Monday, I'm sorry, Monday, September twenty-fifth at six P M. And on that same evening or afternoon from five to six P M, there will be an open house up at Cornell Cooperative Extension in Warrensburg. Uh, the Office for the Aging of Warren and Hamilton Counties will be holding their annual Senior Picnic at the Fish Hatchery, also in Warrensburg, on Wednesday, September twenty-seven. I think there's still time to uh, to register for that event. The Veterans Services Peer-to-Peer Program will be taking a bus trip to Gettysburg on Friday morning, September twenty-ninth. They're going to be leaving here, bright and early uh, in cooperation with our neighbors in Washington County also. The Glens Falls Senior Center will hold their annual expo at the Queensberry Hotel tomorrow, Wednesday, September thirteenth, from one to six P M. Uh, I understand there's going to be more than fifty different not-for-profits organizations that that work with senior citizens and their families present for that event and significant event to be able to attend, and that completes my report. Thank you.
Supervisor Dross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee met on August twenty-third, and before you today are Resolutions four fourteen through four twenty-two. Most of them are for service-type agreements. Uh, four twenty, four twenty-one are for school resource officer services at the Hadley Luzern School and Warrensburg School Districts. Our next meeting is this coming Wednesday at nine A M. Thank you.
Supervisor Marlino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got two for a report. I'll start with our tax. Our tax is going to meet on the twenty-eighth of September to finalize its budget and also to be going over some applications that are here for the special events, and well, supervisors are encouraged to attend. And also on the twenty-eighth at eleven A M., we'll have our tourism meeting and finalize our budget. And both the top tax and tourism have went through the first phase of the budget report last month. Thank you.
Supervisor Shroud.
No committee report. Thank you.
Report by County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beginning on twenty-first of August, as Supervisor Thomas mentioned, we began having our budget meetings. Under Supervisor Thomas's expert tutelage, and he's quite the taskmaster, we had twenty-six meetings over an eight-day period. And he gave you the results of where we currently stand. We'll be working on that. Twenty-second of August, had a meeting where we reached agreement internally on Resolution four forty-one that you see about the SBCA. SBCA, we agree that there will be a monthly fee of eight thousand dollars for that cert- for those services. We guarantee that the SBCA will be continually available to handle animal cruelty cases. They will also handle dog control cases. Right now, it's come to my attention that uh, many of our, several of our patrol officers have picked up stray dogs across the county and taking them home at night because there's no place to put them currently. So in the future, after hours, they'll have a code. They can uh, leave the dogs at SBCA of Upstate New York, and SBCA will then get in touch with the dog control officers as this does not eliminate the requirement of towns to have dog control officers in the city of Glens Falls. And they'll work with them to rehome those dogs. Uh, the other thing, and probably most important, is the Sheriff's Office gets about a thousand animal cruelty calls a year. And in many cases, they dispatch a patrol officer out to investigate and find that it's not really an animal cruelty case. What this, the SBCA has agreed to do is take those calls and they'll contact the individuals who made the complaint and triage the calls, and they believe that probably only about ten percent of the calls a sheriff receives would be actual animal, potential animal cruelty cases that need to be investigated. So the SBCA will send those to dispatch, and in other cases, they believe with their training, they'll be able to resolve the issue. They're also going to conduct training for all of our sheriff's patrol officers twice a year for that. And then they'll also handle our animal cruelty cases for which, right now, we have no one handling animal cruelty cases in Warren County. So appreciate your support on that. Twenty-fifth of August had a COVID sink. Like to remind everyone that COVID is here. It's still around. We have had a number of employees who include supervisors who have been have recent bouts of COVID. Encourage everyone to use caution. FDA just approved the newest vaccine that will be available very shortly that will address the current variants, so. We are, the community's come a long way since this, the health community in the area has come a long way since this began. And so our procedures and policies will change a little bit if there is an increase in COVID cases, but public health will still be involved in all of those situations. Twenty-eighth of August, our Health Plan Renewal Meetings, Resolutions four thirty-three and four thirty-four, we talked about those. On the sixth of September, I visited Southern Adirondack Independent Living Sail in Queensberry on Glenwood Avenue. They provide amazing services to assist people uh, and help people live independently for as long as possible and practical. They provide medical devices and all types, a lot of different types of services. And they also, I was surprised to learn, provide a lot of support to tourists who come into our region who need help with various disabilities, and Sail provides a lot of service to them. Uh, beginning of September, I began my performance feedback sessions with department heads. On the sixth of September, Warren County twenty forty Comprehensive Plan Working Group Meeting. The project's moving on pretty well, and we have a project advisory group in place of supervisors and citizens across the county that are providing good feedback. I'd encourage everyone to go to the Warren County twenty twenty website. It's linked to the Warren County Planning webpage for more comprehensive comprehensive information on where we are and to track our progress on that. Several have mentioned the balloon festival meeting on seventh of September. I think we're in pretty good shape with that. Uh, that's been under Supervisor Strauss' excellent leadership, so appreciate that support for that. Talked about SUNY Project, Supervisor Leggett mentioned that. Uh, this week is Child Welfare Appreciation Week. Serves as a reminder of the vital role our caseworkers play in the well-being of our community's most vulnerable members. And it's an opportunity to reflect on the challenges they face daily uh, to honor their unwavering commitment to making a positive impact. Our caseworkers work in high-stress, emotionally demanding situations, and yet they continue to demonstrate an unwavering commitment to the children and families they serve. I encourage everyone to take time, if you can, to stop over in DSS and just say thanks to all our great caseworkers for all the work they do. Also pleased to announce that Janelle Jones has been selected as the We'll Walk a Mary Fuller Women Helping Women Award, and she'll be presented. That's an amazing award. It's awarded to one woman a year in the county. It's celebrated throughout the year. Uh, it's an honor to have one of our own Warren County leaders be selected for this award. It's an honor to have one of our own Warren County leaders be selected for this award. Congratulations to Janelle. She'll be presented this award on the eighteenth next Monday. Employees with over twenty years of service to Warren County. Catherine Devlin, the Board of Elections, twenty-two years. Josette Kill, Social Services, twenty-nine years. Kelly Brennan, Office for the Aging, twenty-nine years. Robert LaGoye, Sheriff's Office, twenty-nine years. Lost my place. Countryside Adult Home, Tracy Graves, Countryside Adult Home, twenty-nine years. Dana Hall, Public Health, thirty-five years, and Juliana Pearl, Social Services, thirty-nine years. Thanks to all those for the commitment to Warren County citizens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Report of county attorney.
Thank you. Good morning. Last week I advised the members of the board that the lawsuit against Warren County that was initiated by the City of New York back on June eighth twenty twenty-three where the city was seeking to have the state of emergency and local orders that have been enacted by Warren County regarding the overnight housing of individuals who were receiving public assistance from another municipality. That that lawsuit was discontinued following the success of a motion practice before Manhattan judge who determined that the City of New York did not have the authority or ability to make Warren County and other counties come to Manhattan to litigate the issue of Warren County State of Emergencies and Local Orders. So it's an interesting, it was an interesting decision and a a strong result for the power and authority of each individual county in the state of New York. And subject to any questions, that's my entire report for this month.
Questions? President Batey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So they they dropped the suit against all the counties, correct, or?
Some of the counties still have litigation ongoing, I believe, but the judge in Manhattan required every single defendant granted every single defendant's motion to have the matter removed to the county of that county order location. So the Warren County portion of the lawsuit on August twenty-ninth received a new was filed here in Warren County and it was the following day that the City of New York discontinued.
So, yeah, so I was just curious. So so does that mean they they dropped all the other counties or they didn't? Or they're going to do that each individually?
Everybody was in a different position.
Okay.
So I can't say across the board because I have not gone and looked up the new index numbers in all the other thirty counties to determine where that litigation stands. There were four or five lawsuits that were filed prior to Warren County being sued. Those specifically, I can't state what position they're currently in in those various counties.
Supervisor Gresko.
Thank you, Chairman. A question to the administrator. Warren County will continue to have your preparedness meetings on this issue. I mean, you focused me with department heads and everything. So, yes, yeah, we'll continue to go on.
Yes, we'll still have those meetings. Matter of fact, I I have an upcoming meeting with another citizens group who's expressed interest of possibly supporting a migrant family. And so we'll continue to have those meetings and also continue to have the task force meetings as needed.
Great. Thank you.
My questions, reading communications.
The only thing we've received is the Town of Lake George Resolution Number one fourteen of twenty twenty-three entitled The Decision on Twenty Twenty-three Sales Tax Funds at County.
Okay, bring in resolutions.
Proposed resolutions number four oh nine through four forty-three, as well as six proclamations, were distributed to the members of the Board of Supervisors and posted to the Warren County website on Friday, September eighth, twenty twenty-three. The proclamations before you are number thirty, September eleventh, Day of Service and Remembrance. Number thirty-one, Suicide Prevention Month. Thirty-two, Preparedness Month. Thirty-three, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thirty-four, Freedom from Workplace Police Week. And thirty-five, Special Olympic Support and Awareness Day. For Resolution four twenty-nine, that was amended after mailing and they were distributed this morning to those copies of the revised resolution. So a motion is needed to approve the amendments as provided.
We have a motion. Motion by Supervisor Devitt. Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Malino, discussion. All is in favor. All right, discussion, public comment on resolutions. Anybody wish to discuss a resolution supervisor?
Thank you. On four twenty-nine with the resolution amendment regarding this language about the position will be deleted. Can someone just explain to me what what the intent is here?
I can address that.
I guess I don't understand why we would, if there's no other unfilled patrol officer position, then we're saying we'll create a new position for the purpose of what if Warrensburg doesn't need a school resource officer? To have another patrol officer?
When the resolution was passed by the committee, there was an amendment and request that the position be deleted if the school district no longer entered into a contract for that position. And that was made subject to my legal review of that amendment. So the proper way to phrase it would be. So that was the concern. The concern was creating an extra position that stays there permanently. And the additional language is geared to capture the concern about that position not continuing indefinitely. But also complying with civil service law to make sure that that patrol officer, if he is, once he's employed with the county, the Sheriff's Office has the ability to move that position to another school district or another position within the department. So if there's no open position, then that newest position would terminate if the school district no longer requires the position as a contract with the Sheriff's Department.
Can I just follow up? But so if we created, they say they want it for one year, then they no longer want it anymore. And we have no other position for that person to go into. Civil service rules say we have to create a new position or keep it, or we can still delete it at that time.
That's the purpose of the way this resolution is added.
Thank you.
To address that concern that it continue in perpetuity forever.
Any other discussions on resolutions?
Yeah, just to do a follow-up there on that one. I I didn't know it was that easy to just say, oh, geez, that position's not there. We don't need you anymore. We have to let you go. Just a concern. I believe our Sheriff's Department is a unionized. So I mean, if we put that in the resolution, does that give us the legal right to say, well, Warrensburg doesn't need that school officer anymore, so it's time for you to go. So it's not like we could say, okay, hit the road because I believe we've been down this road. You can't do it that way. So just a question, it just popped up in my mind, but my my main reason for raising my hand. I happened to have been out of town there last week when a lot of this stuff comes in the the S P the S P C A. I see the great need for this and I believe I brought it up before. You know, how are we going to fund this? The 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 two major tax bills I have at my household are the school tax, which I just paid and my county tax. And I see that the county is picking up a tab you know, of eight thousand dollars a month, which, you know, in my calculations, ninety-six thousand dollars a year within the stipulation that there also could be additional charges as provided by the proposal and be it in in the be it further. So you know, this is just a a base fee of eight thousand dollars a month. So I I believe I brought up, I mean, that a lot of the towns and and the only reason I say that I, you know, I love animals. I I just so happen not to have a, you know, an animal right now. So I do not pay that that fee to my town any longer because my dog passed away and I haven't gotten another one. But you know, there's a fee that we pay into our towns that they have an animal. But I mean, here is the county's picking up a tab. You know, for all the towns that collect money. Now, I'm sure, you know, I'll be told, well, geez, a lot of some of that money goes to New York State and stuff like this. But I thought I brought up in the meeting when this first, are we going to contract with the towns to maybe have the towns give us some of their money that they have for the animal controls? The towns and villages to help offset this because I don't think it's fair for the people that do not have animals to pick up for the tab for the people that do have animals and, you know, can't take care of which offends me completely. Just a question. Well, I obviously must have stopped. Now I tried to keep it short and simple.
Can I respond, Mr. McGowan?
Well, if I could just, let me just frame the issue if if that's okay, Chairman. No portion of this contract provides any funding for the purposes of dog control in any municipality in the county. The contract is not related to and does not cover the services that our towns in the city of Glen Falls is required to pay for as part of the licensing fee that funds those operations. This is for a different scope of services required by the Sheriff's Department. So that's how I kind of frame the discussion so that there's no misunderstanding that animal control, well, not animal control, but dog control is separate and apart from what this contract with the SPCA is for and what it covers.
Follow up, please.
You know, this is where I can confused in government. Because to me, in my simple mind, kind of like the same thing. Yep, we have our 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 control officer, dog control officers during the day. This is just for a night. My question is, is that we take a fee to have animals. Maybe we should register every animal with every town from goats to cows to you name it to help offset this. But I just don't think it's fair that the taxpayer, which I believe this service is needed. But that's a hundred thousand dollars a year where we just heard that our budget i- is up seven mil. Just just a thought. I'm not, I will be voting yes for this because I believe that it's a service. But I did bring it up in committee beforehand is how are we going to pay for this? And I believe I was told, Brad, we will figure that out down the road. So here we are down the road. We're calling for this to be approved. And how are we going to offset some of the costs? No idea. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Supervisor Strauss.
All right, I understand Brad and don't disagree with him. But this particular contract fills a service that needs to be done. I, through my years of service to the community, have gone through several animal control and dog control organizations. I have never met one that is as professional as SPCA of Upstate New York and Kathy Cootier. We're lucky to have an organization like this amidst us willing to do this service that needs to get done. So although I understand Brad, I think it's important that we put out that we're in a very fortunate situation to have the SPCA of Upstate New York willing to do this for us and I think at a very reasonable price. I just wanted to add that to what Brad said. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Brad.
Thank you. I I had I had forgotten we did this through a bid proposal. So I guess this is either the only bid or the the lowest bid. And I I guess I would like to know, just someone explain to me or can you say what what the eight thousand dollars a month is going to? Is there like a a call-out fee? Is it like an hourly thing? What is the fee structure? And I also want to point out that the resolution says we're authorizing this agreement relative to dog seizure, dog control, dog shelter and animal cruelty prevention, response and support. What what are they going to be doing that our municipalities aren't already paying to do? And what's the fee structure?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the towns and city Glen Falls are required by statute to have dog control officers. And that is, as Supervisor McGowan said, generally paid by the licensing fees that the citizens pay when they license their dogs. The that's as far as it goes at the town level, dog control. What we're talking about for the SPCA is additional help with animal control. If there was an animal cruelty case, they just had one recently with thirty cats. That's what they would take care of. If there are horses, that's always a possibility or other animals beyond dogs, SPCA will take care of that. The eight thousand dollars is, as I said, they're providing training twice a year to our police force, our police patrol officers, sheriff's patrol officers. We do not have that training right now. They are doing triage of the calls that come in reporting animal cruelty cases. So we don't dispatch patrol officers across the county for for a reason that, you know, we're all limited in the amount of officers we have. Responding to one of those calls could take two hours when it's not necessary and SPCA will do that. They will also be available after hours for our patrol officers who pick up stray animals to take them to SPCA. And I mentioned before patrol officers have taken stray dogs home with them and then tried and then made arrangements with dog control officers in various towns to take care of that the following day. SPCA will may now take on that service for us. The only other thing I would say is right now and we've run, this is a result of three separate RFPs we have run. This is the third RFP they responded to and we thought it was a reasonable proposal. If we don't have this, we're faced with possibly having to do it ourselves. And all I can say is my fellow county administrator down in Saratoga cautioned against that and said, I had to develop my own animal cruelty and develop a kennel and it's costing them about three million dollars a year to do that. And so this is, we need to hopefully keep SPCA going to handle these cases. We average two to three animal cruelty cases a year. They can take up to four or six months to resolve. And you know, it takes a lot of work to resolve those and they'll take care of that with the district attorney for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know that this has been a big discussion for years. And we have gone years without this this service. SPCA of Upstate New York is a premier organization. We have used them. They come very highly regarded. And especially the animal cruelty charges because our animal control officer, our our dog warden and the town does an excellent job. We also have a kennel and we contract with other towns and to be able to give a place for any dogs that get picked up, say, in the middle of the night or any other day. We'd be more than willing to contract with the county perhaps. But the this does seem to be a lot of money. It seems to be about twice as much as what I would expect it to be. If there is a way to be able to track the usage on things and also Sheriff Patrol is one of the law enforcement agencies that get involved with animal cruelty. The town of Chester always uses the New York State Troopers. And there is no charge from the troopers and they do come into court on cases and things like that. I don't know how that all fits in onto the this situation. But this contract needs to be monitored. As Supervisor Bremer had pointed out, where's the the breakdown on some of these these charges on things? Where's the, the breakdown on some of these, these charges on things? And to see where the county is saving money or needs to spend the money is important. Before, uh, when another organization had the contract with the county, it was under the legislative board's um purview and uh we moved it over into the sheriff's department because it had more to do with law enforcement. And they, the thinking was at that time, they have the ability to review the contracts, review what's being done and come up with a determination of its value. Is this the right amount of money for the services we've got? The sheriff department at that time did not do that re- review. We, uh, so that there was never any real serious discussion on it, but then it all went away. We never reviewed the, um, renewed the contract with that other organization and haven't spent a hundred thousand dollars a year on animal control for the past four years, perhaps, maybe five. So it's just like some assurance that there's going to be tracking for the significant contract to make sure that we are getting the value needed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you again. Yeah, I'm not disagreeing. I think this is a service that is really needed. My main question is, is I'd like to see the revenue stream. Cause I don't feel it's fair to the constituents that do not own animals, you know, will have to pay for people that um have animals and abuse them. Um, but I, I have the utmost respect for the SPCA. I, you know, I, I've read and followed all the way along to last minute. My main question is, what is the revenue stream we have to offset this for our taxes? And I think there's an opportunity here that we can get a revenue stream somehow either from the towns or from the, you know, a little, you know, a little here and there to, to make up the costs to make this um, you know, neutral to the constituents out there in the county.
Thank you. I would just like to say that when someone's animal is picked up and brought here, we've had two happen recently. They do pay a fee to get their animal back. Anyone who goes to court for the animal cruelty also will pay a fee. So maybe that money can be used to offset our costs for spending this. And the second point is this is involving animal cruelty. Towns only have, in mine anyway, only have a dog warden. So when we have someone who is starving their horses, we have no recourse whatsoever other than something like this. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this resolution? Any discussion on other resolutions? Any public comment on any resolutions? A roll call votes on resolutions. I'll ask votes on four twenty-four and I will confuse myself and have to.
Four forty-one? Roll call four forty-one, yeah.
Any other roll call votes or?
Got one quick question. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think Supervisor Runyon had a uh excellent uh idea. Is that? I mean, obviously I haven't gotten any answer for revenue stream and here we are voting on it. And I want to make sure that, you know, I can cast a, a positive yes here. But I mean, is, is this um, you know, and it's mainly um cruelty. And a lot of times where the cruelty comes in the non-feeding and everything is due to the fact that, you know, they just don't have any money. So now they have to pay the court with no money. So uh, and I'm not saying that's always the circumstance, but, you know, all I'm trying is, is get something, can we get a revenue stream? You know, to cover some of this cost and I'm, I'm not getting an answer. So it's kind of hard for me to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, when an animal cruelty case is handled by the courts, uh, the courts award, uh, if they find that it's an actual animal cruelty case, they award the charges and fees. Um, you know, they, that's part of the settlement and whoever the person is who uh was charged with animal cruelty is responsible for paying that back. It's paid back to the clerk, uh, the county clerk. And I don't have a percentage of how successful we are with collecting that money. Uh, I don't believe it's a significant um amount, but um, you know, we do make an attempt to collect on that. If there are fees associated with boarding an animal, there are charges uh the same as dog control. All our dog control officers uh charge individuals if they have to board an animal for a specified, specified period of time until that person claims the animal, we would do the same thing through the SPCA. So there is a, a revenue stream that comes back. It's not going to offset the total amount that we're paying. It, it will be some percentage.
Do we need wording in this resolution for that?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Thanks. One of the things I thought of too is if this is to save on patrol officers' time, are we gonna have a reduction in this sheriff's budget requests?
Yeah, I'd just uh like to address the aspect of fairness. We live in a society where many of us don't uh, we pay for services that we may not all use. The way it works is we all share the burden. Um, you don't get a list of services with your tax bill and get to check off which ones you want because you use them and which ones you don't want to support. It's the way this society works. So regarding the aspect of fairness, I don't uh, I don't see that as an issue.
Well, we have to run that system more. We should say that.
Resolution four oh nine, making, making supplemental appropriations, Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventeen votes in favor. Resolution four ten, amending Warren County budget for twenty twenty-three for various departments within Warren County. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventeen votes in favor. Resolution four twenty-four. Resolution four twenty-four, introducing proposed local law number five of twenty twenty-three entitled the local law creating a partial real property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers pursuant to New York State Real Property Tax Law, Section four sixty-six A. Excuse me, Chairperson. I thought we had a roll call on four twenty-one. Did we do that? No.
Four forty.
Four forty-one. Four forty-one? I'm losing it? Yes.
You're losing it.
That was the one you asked for?
I was forty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want it?
I'm sorry.
Four twenty-one?
No. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred fifty-seven votes in favor. Resolution four twenty-nine, amending table of organization and Warren County salary and compensation plan. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventeen votes in favor. Resolution four thirty-six, uh, establishing capital reserve fund A eight sixty-five. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventeen votes in favor. Resolution four thirty-eight, establishing Capitol Project H four twenty-seven, Olmstedville Road, CR nineteen, over Marshall Brook Culver. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventeen votes in favor. Resolution four thirty-nine, establishing, establishing Capitol Project H four twenty-eight, Bay Road over unnamed water course south of Lockhart Mountain. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventeen votes in favor. Resolution four thirty? Nope.
Four forty.
Four forty, sorry. I'm sorry, increasing Capitol Project H four twenty-five, Adirondack Bridge and Bieber Pond Bridge replacements. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventeen votes in favor. Resolution four forty-one, uh, accepting proposal and authorizing agreement with SPCA of Upstate New York. Mr. McGowan?
I am a yes um on the uh, to make sure that we look into revenue streams to help offset this cost and um monitoring it uh until the next um uh renewal. So yes, thank you.
Mr. Beatty?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventeen votes in favor. And resolution four forty-two, authorizing appropriation of funds from the general fund unappropriated surplus to the sheriff's office budget. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Etoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yeah.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventeen votes in favor collective on the rest.
All is in favor of the rest of the resolution. Take a bite by saying aye.
Aye.
Privilege of the four, a public comment?
I have a couple of comments and then a question. I, with respect to um our administrators note about COVID cases, you know, this is still an issue. I would ask this board again to consider a video conferencing policy for the board. Even if you don't want to have it as broad as the current definition of extraordinary circumstances that's recommended, you could say something like when a person has a, you know, disease that is contagious, that that would be grounds for them to be able to participate in the conference, in the meeting by video conference. Secondly, I thought I heard um somewhere through the grapevine that there was an effort to remove the board's approval of transfers or amendments of the budget um for different department heads. And until such time as this board becomes a legislature and not a board of supervisors, I think it is our job, our duty, our responsibility to look at budget transfers and amendments and that we approve them. It really doesn't take that long for us to do that. And that should not be taken away from us as a board as we still have responsibility for running this county as a board of supervisors, not a legislative body with an administrator who is a county executive. We don't have a county executive. We have the board of supervisors. And then lastly, um, on that note about just kind of running the county and knowing what's happening, can we please have an update on the department head filling the planning department and DSS?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so DSS, uh, we approved uh last month at the board meeting, uh Christina Mastriani as the acting uh commissioner of social services. Uh, she will be in that role um for up to a year. And uh we will conduct a search for a commissioner at some point, I suspect, uh during the fall. for up to a year, and we will conduct a search for a commissioner at some point, I suspect during the fall. So we're still working on the position and how we go about doing that. As far as the planning department, we are, I believe, going to take, and I was going to bring this to the committee meeting next week to have a discussion about what I think a solution is in the planning department. Right now, we have probably the potential for, we have two, an incoming planner and existing planner there, and Ethan. And we believe we'll have two strong planners. I think I would like to look for a third strong planner and not necessarily look for a department head that would be an administrative role supervising that. I'd prefer to use the three positions as strong county planners, and I would have to get involved in a lot of the planning efforts of that department, and I plan to do so. I'd prefer to have that discussion at the committee coming up and not have a discussion if possible today because I don't think we've worked out the organizational structure yet, and I still have to have some meetings with the planning department to talk about that.
Any other public comment, Supervisor McGowan?
Uh, yes, I've I've gotten some calls from constituents of wondering why we're not allowing or, 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 you know, doing allowing more video conference calls and and participation from people. It seems to be a a large swing in the way things are done ever since COVID. And the social aspect of people coming out is seem to have backed up a little. And a lot of people enjoy watching our meetings and listening to them via the media, but would like to join. Is this something that, you know, we can look into? Is there a law why we can't do that? And, you know, Supervisor Bramer brings up a great point of, you know, especially with COVID coming back around. I mean, there was a time that we, we all stayed home and did video meetings. And then we were able to conduct our county business and be safe. So I, I think this is something that we we need to look into, especially for the public. You know, for the participation. So it is this something that we can recommend to a particular committee to move this forward?
Certainly bring it back to legislative rules. They looked at it once before. Supervisor Merlino?
I hate to beat a dead horse. I'm glad everybody voted on four eleven. I just want to just say one thing, and Mr. Drossi kind of hit me on it. In my town, I have one problem, big problem, not a woman. Everybody pays the same amount of money for water. Sixty thousand gallons, hundred fifty dollars a year. I constantly get people coming to my office and say, well, you know, I only come here for two months in the summer and use the water, but I'm paying for the whole year. I had one guy come in a couple of weeks ago, says he only comes two hours a weekend to his house just to check it out. Why should he pay the money? Well, number one, the system runs all year. The repairs have to be done all year. The employees have to be paid all year. The electric runs all year. So in respect, thinking of the dogs, we have somebody taking care of it. Every constituent, now I may not have a dog, is paying it, but someday down the line, I might be, I might get an animal. And never had to be paying for it. So I think I'm glad we passed it, and I think this should be, issue should be dropped. Thank you.
Any other public comments, Supervisor?
Yes, just one quick issue. Most of us, if not all of us in our communities, have unserved populations for broadband services. It's a significant issue in in today's environment. If you think about it all the the ways that people use broadband, including students today. So i- in my research, I'm trying to find some solutions and resolutions to this. I've discovered that there's much analysis that is taking place. Some by our planning office, some by EDC, and many other groups as well. New York State created a connect all office. And that over the next couple of years will be distributing literally billions of dollars across the state. How do we get involved with that? And do we do it individually and compete against each other? I find that to be an arduous task. So I would ask for consideration for our planning office at some point or future board meeting, just to give us a a brief overview of what they see countywide in terms of the analysis that they have completed and what guidance they can give us as individual communities to help our constituents.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the AATV is going to be having a panel about broadband on October twentieth at Gore Mountain. Everybody is welcome to that. The Common Ground Alliance will have breakout sessions in the afternoon to discuss possible solutions and advocacy because as Supervisor Drossi pointed out, why should we compete against each other as we go for these things? Then it's together we we stand. So what we can do as a county and then take it on what we can do as a region, the Adirondack region, all the better for us.
Any other public comments? Anybody?